Welcome to St. Louis On The Air. I'm Don Marsh. It's clear that American women are energized to make a difference and move off the political sidelines. An unprecedented number of women, 13,000 of them, are running for political office this year. Is it an anomaly or a social movement? While almost 500 female candidates are seeking jobs in the US House and Senate, most are seeking office in their own towns and neighborhoods. We have three of them from our area in the studio, all ran for the first time this year. All are young moms. Jamie Dolby is a Maryville University Development employee who lost her race for the Chesterfield City Council in April. Heather Silverman is a program director with the National Council of Jewish Women. She was elected to the Creve Court City Council this year. And Kara Wertz is a financial analyst for Ascension Living and was elected to the Kirkwood City Council this month. Ladies, thanks so much for being with us. Great to have you.
Thank you.
Jamie, let me start with you, and I'll ask each of you the same question. What was your inspiration to run?
My inspiration came from when I moved to Chesterfield, I wanted to get involved. I started to attend the meetings, and I noticed that the meeting attendance would swell when there was an issue. And I didn't want to be that resident that became involved when something directly affected me. And so I reached out and wanted to join boards and commissions, and I didn't get any luck. I got a little pushback. And so I said, maybe it's best that I run. There's an open seat, and I'll let the residents decide.
And they did.
And they did.
Unfortunately. But is it the end for you? I mean, has this discouraged you?
Uh, no, it didn't discourage me. It inspired me. I've been in Chesterfield less than three years, and I gained 36% of a vote of a community of residents that had never heard my name before. And so it inspired me. I'll continue doing what I've been doing, staying involved, and, you know, we don't date election material for a reason.
Heather, how about you?
Yeah, I came at it from two different places. So I guess a few years ago, we were living in Olivet, and like most people who get involved in local government, there were a development behind my house that I didn't like. And so I collected signatures, and I went to the Board of Adjustment, and I made a presentation. And after the presentation, the staff person said, you know, you're pretty good at this. Would you be interested in joining? And I found I really enjoyed serving my community in that way, but really never thought I would run for office. When we moved to Creve Court, I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission. And throughout this, people had suggested that maybe I would, at some point, want to run. And I also noticed that our elected leadership on the local, state, and federal levels just wasn't as civil as I would like them to be to each other. And so I decided that now was the time.
All right. And congratulations on the win.
Thank you.
Kara, how about your inspiration?
Well, local government, to me, has always been kind of a passion. I just love how much it can affect someone's daily life. So a few years ago, I got involved through our local park board and sat on that for a few years. And last year, about this time, I kind of had the crazy idea of, you know, maybe I could give more of my time and energy and look for the city council. So that's what I did, and here we are.
Yeah, well, congratulations to you as well. I'm just drawing a blank here. These are nonpartisan candidacies, I assume, in every case? Is that correct?
Yes.
What do you make? Kara, I'll start with you. What do you make of this women's movement? When I say that 13,000 women nationwide are running, I mean, that is way, way higher than it's been in past years. What's going on in your mind?
So for me personally, you know, a little over a year ago, I never would have imagined myself running. You know, I tend to be a sidelines participant. I like to read the data and discuss it, but my personality may not be the type that's a go-getter and put myself out there. And about a year ago, you start to see all these women putting themselves out there, mothers, professional women. And I thought, well, shoot, if they can do it, I might be able to, too. And you don't have to have that full confidence that, you know, you always thought you had to.
Did you see something happening nationally that was part of the encouragement?
Yes. I think the numbers definitely help. You know, you feel like you have almost a sisterhood behind you, even if you don't know some of these women. And, you know, I've met both Jamie and Heather prior to this, and some of the discussions we have with each other, you realize that you're doing the right thing, and your voice being added to this discussion is going to help a lot, so.
Do you have a view on that, Heather?
Women make up more than 50% of our state population, and our elected leaders should reflect that. And I think the other thing that we're seeing is that we have mentors to look up to. I mean, coming from Creve Court, looking at Senator Shoup and Representative McCreary, and my own treasurer also had served on the city council, Beth Kistner, when she was a young mom. So I think that makes it a lot easier. We're not the pioneers. We do have women to look up to, and I think women, I think Kara mentioned this, are also really willing to help each other. And there is sort of this sisterhood that is there that is willing to help you. I know, I didn't really know Representative McCreary before I started to run, but when I reached out to her, she was all in. She came out in canvas for me. She gave me great advice, and that was really helpful. And I don't know that we've seen that before.
You know, you mentioned earlier on that you, there was something going on in your neighborhood in Olivet that you didn't like, so you took a stand. Remind me, in that degree, of Harriet Woods. You recall Harriet Woods?
Yes.
A former state senator, lieutenant governor. She got started on a career that became national because she got tired of hearing a manhole in the street behind her house. Every time a car drove over, it made a lot of noise.
Yeah.
So she went down and started pounding some tables, and the rest, as they say, is history. It doesn't have to take a big deal to get the thing going.
Right.
How about, what's your sense of what's going on, Jamie?
I think, you know, a lot of times you hear the saying, the man is the head of the household. But I really...
Not in my household.
Well, I think a lot of people say it while they're not at home, but you really find out that the women, we're the driving force of neighborhoods. And when particularly you think about St. Louis County, we're a town of neighborhoods, and we drive that. We make the decisions about where we live and what's important about school and education. And I think that if we're going to represent that many women, we have to have representation that looks like the residents and the people that we serve.
Who emboldened you in terms of females? Who emboldened you to take a stand and get involved?
I mean, you know, obviously, my mother. My mother is, you know, she's been an advocate all of her life of just doing the right thing. And coming from St. Louis, you know, you have to pay close attention to Maxine Waters. I like to call her Aunt Maxine. I like to call her Aunt Maxine. She's not my aunt. I've never met her, but she is a de facto mentor to especially any African-American woman thinking about going into politics. She does not back down. She has a voice. She lets her voice be known. And she kind of has that St. Louis spirit while she's out in California representing those residents.
She's not shy, is she?
Not at all. Not at all.
We have an email here from Adana in Crestwood. "Last year was the first time I'd ever marched in protest. The size of the crowd overwhelmed me with the knowledge that so many women felt as I did. Since then, I've become more active politically, writing letters, contributing to campaigns, sending letters to the editor. Did the Women's March inspire you to greater involvement?" Heather?
That's interesting. I actually, the organization I worked for had planned with a number of other organizations, the ACT portion after the march, so where you could come and find out how to get involved. So it was something that I was already wanting other women to do. But what it did, I think, was raise awareness for everyone about ensuring that we have voices that need to be heard. I was shocked, and I do think this part is from the Women's March, the number of people who were just incredibly supportive of my run, and that were really excited to see a young mom get out there and work for them.
Kara, how about the Women's March?
So I marched last year, and this year, my campaign kickoff was on the same day as the march. So I remember, I think I said to a few people, "Last year I marched, but this year I run." So that's kind of how I felt about what it did for us.
What kind of pushback, if any, did you get from husband, bosses, men, other men in your life?
You know, my close-knit group and family, you know, everyone was real supportive. But it was interesting that I heard that some voters were concerned, mainly because there were already three women on the council, how are we going to deal with a fourth? And something like that is...
You should see the expressions on the other lady's face with this.
And, you know, luckily, most people are very supportive and excited to see what I might be able to bring to the table, is, like you mentioned, a young mom with different viewpoints than might already be on there, kind of.
Heather, did you get pushback?
No, I'm lucky that I worked for an organization that was really excited and really supportive, and my husband was, too. I did, when I was knocking doors, find people would ask if I would still be able to make my kids dinner before the council meetings, which I was sharing with the ladies in the green room. On one hand, seems ridiculous, but on the other, like, my swearing-in is tonight, and I am the one who has to coordinate and make sure everybody's going to get dinner before I go.
Well, I'm sure you'll get it done and get the other job done as well. How about, Jamie, pushback?
No, no, I didn't get any pushback at home, for sure, nor there was an opportunity for that. But I think that residents really supported me. I was one of the youngest women to run for city council in Chesterfield and the first African-American candidate. And so I had kind of that twofold first time, or it was different for residents to see someone that they just hadn't seen before run. And I think it just, I didn't get a pushback. If they did, they did it quietly.
Do you think race might have been an issue in that campaign? Because the African-American population in Chesterfield is quite low.
It's, the African-American population in Chesterfield is less than 4%. And so I received 36% of the vote. And for me, I think that, you know, we'd be crazy to say, race is always part of the discussion, but I actually don't think it became a negative part for me. I think I received a lot of encouragement. I didn't have any pushback from residents. I didn't get any offensive comments. People were very supportive, and I think that people were also encouraged with the Parkway School Board race as well. And, you know, that group of supporters were also, you know, a lot of the people that voted in Chesterfield. And so it really was helpful at the time.
Our discussion is women in politics and the growing influence of women on both ends of the political spectrum. 13,000 women are running for office around the country this year. That is an unprecedented number. If you'd like to get into this conversation, we'd love to hear from you and get your thoughts about this new and emerging trend. Obviously, it's one that's going to continue. We'll take your calls. 382-8255 is the number. That's 382-TALK. You can send us an email to talk@stlpublicradio.org, or if you'd prefer to send a tweet, we'd take one at STLOnAir. My guests in studio are Jamie Dolby, Heather Silverman, and Kara Wertz. Back to continue the conversation in just a moment. This is St. Louis On The Air on St. Louis Public Radio, 90.7 KWMU. And welcome back as we continue our conversation on women in politics. There are a number of organizations out there, ladies, that assist women running for political office. Emily's List is one, and I think Maggie's List is one. There's one I had not heard of before called She Should Run, which is, were any of you involved in any of those organizations to kind of get you going?
I mean, I follow Emily's List and She Should Run. And Kara and I met at the Women League of Voters in January.
Yes.
It was January 27th, our birthday. We met at an event, and it was just training for people that were considering to run or that supporters of candidates. And a lot of those elections support people on a bigger platform, but I think it's important to really kind of stay tuned to that, even if you're running on a local election, because the information still applies.
How about you, Heather?
Well, Kara and I actually met at a National Women's Political Caucus meeting and through the St. Louis chapter. I also, Senator Shoup did a training along with a few others last year that I did. A few years ago, I actually went to a Vote Run Lead Conference, and then I did the webinars for the She Should Run.
Right. Kara?
And, yeah, very similar to what they've already mentioned. And the She Should Run, actually, I think, was a great first step for me, to just get an idea on how to even start this thing. You know, as someone who's such a newbie, it can be intimidating, because you think that there's this secret code to running for office, and there's really not. There's just some great suggestions and great help out there, you know, specifically for women.
I do think one of the things that was the most helpful, I mean, I did all those things, but that was really helpful was just reaching out to other women elected leaders, and I, and men, too. And I was honestly surprised by how many were really excited that I wanted to run and wanted to take the time to talk to me.
Jamie, what do women bring to the table that men don't?
I think that women, you know, obviously, we bring a perspective of relatability to residents that sometimes the male counterparts just are not, they're not thinking about it. It's in the back of their head, because they're so like, this is the policy, and these are the bylaws, and this is what we're going to vote on. And I think that sometimes women, as moms and wives and so involved in family and work, we have a way of balancing things and juggling so much on our plate that we can relate that to, you know, things that come aboard of a council. And we can relate to those residents that come and push things that happen in their backyards. We can relate to them a little bit more. We have more compassion, for sure.
Right. Heather, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think moms are in an interesting place. I have twin boys, and I'm often between them and mediating sort of their issues and things like that. And a lot of sitting on a city council is, of course, budgets and things like that, which I can, you know, we also do that through, I know I handle all the grocery shopping and finding the cheapest price on diapers and things like that, but it's also a lot of real estate development. And that is complicated in terms of what's best for the city, what are the rights of the commercial property owner, and then what's best for the residents. And so I think that as a mom who spends a good portion of my day mediating these things anyway, I have a good feel for how to do that. I think the other thing that moms bring to the table is that, I've mentioned before, we're really seeing a lack of civility in our elected leaders. I mean, just...
You think?
Yeah. I mean, look what's happening with the governor and our president, and even seeing some of the things we're seeing in other places. My main focus in life right now is raising children who are good citizens. I do lots of other things, but that is my main goal in life. And one of the reasons I ran for office was to be a good role model to them. And I am consistently telling them, you know, say please, say thank you, this is how you're a good person. Well, that reminds me to do it, too, and to ensure that I behave that way. And I think that moms are a little more tuned into that.
Kara?
Absolutely. The civility part of it is, I think, crucial. I always want to make sure I'm doing something. I don't want my daughter to mimic. You know, you want to make sure that, you know, the pleas and the thank yous, and that you're treating everyone with respect and giving them the time and patience that they need. I think also, as mothers, we kind of have the ability to look short-term and long-term at the same time on the same topic, especially when it comes to development in some of these cities. You always are looking at the short-term effects, and how is this going to look 15, 20 years down the road? Because, you know, my daughter and I will, you know, and my husband are still going to be there with the effects that that might bring, so.
I agree. I think one of the things, in terms of looking long and short-term, is that that's what we're doing every day with our children. It's not just what's the short-term effect, but also long-term, how is what we're doing today going to affect them? The other thing I think that women get a little bit better, especially moms, we're used to serving people. I mean, that's what we do, and I think we get that elected service part, not just the leadership part.
Jamie, you looked like you were getting ready to say something.
Oh, no, I was speaking on the development. In Chesterfield, I ran for War II, and we have a unique development opportunity with Chesterfield Mall. And I was sharing with the ladies, I'm the closest homeowner to the mall, and you think about those things. And, you know, Chesterfield has been known to make some interesting development choices recently with, you know, two outlet malls and Topgolf and tearing down one hockey arena, those types of decisions. And I think that sometimes we have to, yes, make good business decisions, make good financial decisions, but we also have to do what makes sense. And we have to do what makes sense for the people that live in Chesterfield and the families. If we're a family-centered community, we have to do what families want. And sometimes you have to have that voice that still has, you know, a younger family sometimes to say, hey, you guys want people to move to Chesterfield, you all are all at this age of retiring, and you might want to take, you know, a little time to listen to someone that can better relate to new residents.
I want to pick up on a couple of points, but I want to take a call also from Mary in South County before she gets tired of waiting. So let's see what Mary has to say. You're on the air, Mary.
Yes, hi. I just love everything these women are talking about. I do feel women are less combative, they have less ego, they're more collaborative on the whole, their ideas are more in tune with family and with what the people's needs are. I think there's more compassion, because they're more connected to their own family. So I am thrilled. And sometimes I think women listen better, for whatever reason. I know we have very good men out there, but I think it's time for the women's voice, and I am just thrilled that they're there and that they've run and that they've won, and good luck.
Mary, thank you for the call.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, she speaks, I think, the same language that you guys do. She mentioned a number of qualities that women bring to the table. What I hear a lot is that women are more likely to compromise than men. And because they are nurturers, they are better able to deal with other people, particularly on the national level, when you have peace and war decisions being made. If you have someone who is a natural nurturer, that's likely to sway the opinion. Jamie?
And I think that when you say compromise, we have to make sure that people don't always look, you know, in national politics, you look at compromise as such a bad thing, it's such a negative thing. And I think common sense tells us that we aren't always going to get our way. That's what we tell our children. No, this is not going to go your way this time. And so in compromise, it takes some, you've got to check the ego. And you can't go in thinking, this is what I want, this is what I'm going to get, and if I don't get it, I'm going to stand my ground until the end. You know, history has shown us that, you know, those are not always the smartest choices. And so we do have to compromise, and we do have to listen, and we do have to communicate on definitely a more, a higher level of what some people have done in the past.
You say you have to check the ego. Is that something you had to do for not having won?
No, I mean, I went in, I filed on the first day. I didn't know if anyone was going to file against me. And when my opponent, Mary Ann, who is now the councilwoman for War II, ran, decided to run, my ego didn't have to be unchecked, because I ran for the right reasons. I ran for residents. I ran for a voice that I felt like Chesterfield was missing. And when someone doesn't win, it doesn't mean that you pout, you go sit in a corner, and you go against the person. You have to say, okay, congratulations, now let's work together, and let's continue to support Chesterfield, or whatever city you're in.
So you were defeated by another woman?
Yes. And so, you know, some of that is a little joyous, that no matter what happened, we knew that there would be a woman representing War II, and we had a very graceful campaign. We, you know, we were at the polls together, we spoke, I shared my snacks with her volunteers. Like, we, at the end of the day, you know, we all wanted the best thing for Chesterfield.
That's awesome.
Heather, how about the, and Kara, the issue of compromise and nurturing? Do you buy into that?
I do, to a certain degree. Not that I don't think that men can't compromise and be nurturers, but I do think women tend to want to work for the common good a little bit more. I think the other thing that struck me as I was sitting here listening, and as Jamie was talking about, you know, checking your ego, the other thing that I see, and I see it even with the three of us, I think women are more willing to put in that background time. I mean, we all, you know, went to the meetings beforehand, we sat on the boards and commissions beforehand, and we're seeing a lot of, and they're men, who step up and say, I have nothing to do with government, but I get to have that top job. And I think that's where women have the leg up, is that we know we need to have the experience before we can go in and start making these decisions.
Kara?
I think, I forget who mentioned it, but something, there's something different about women who run, in the sense that we take it on as almost our community service. This is what we're giving back to our community. This is what we're giving our time for. Whereas, you know, some other candidates, maybe men, there are some women as well, do it for more of the ego boost, for more of, I want to be out front and center, I want that spotlight on me. And I also think it's different, since all three of us ran for local level, it very much is you're in the trenches with the nitty-gritty detail, you aren't always going to get, you know, the shout-outs and the, kind of the benefit that some of the, you know, statewide and local, or national leaders might get, so.
But I think you're right on with saying, you know, this was, when I decided to do it, it wasn't because I wanted any sort of recognition, it was because I really liked serving my community like this. And I found that, you know, serving in boards, and that service piece was what was really important.
I'm going to take another call. Lisa is joining us from St. Louis. Lisa, you're on the air. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Lisa Clancy. I'm running for St. Louis County Council to represent District 5 right now. I live in Maplewood, so I'm a proud county resident and grew up in Webster Groves. Really glad this conversation is happening today, and I wanted to kind of piggyback on the being a mom and running for office thing. So I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, and when I think about him and wanting him to be surrounded by examples of women in leadership positions, you know, that's a big reason why I'm running. I'm 33, and I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, and I think that that's a perspective right now that I can certainly bring to county council. And I also am hearing a lot of folks saying that they are looking forward to leaders who can be really collaborative, and they feel like that's the skill set that women, that women bring to the table. So I hope you all are hearing that as well. I know that running for office takes a lot of guts, and if you're like me, you're standing behind a stroller and making phone calls at the same time and handing out litter on the playground. So I'm glad that we have this support system among us all who are taking this leap. So thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for the call, Lisa, and good luck to you. Kara, does it take a lot of guts?
Oh, absolutely. I'm, you know, before this, I'm such a, I can be such a shy person that would much rather sit on the sidelines. And to put yourself out there and disrupt your family's routine, that's a lot to ask. And to be able to go up to someone and try to sell yourself as to why you should be on their city council, that's, it's a lot, but it's very rewarding. You really do get to meet a lot of great people, and I think there are some great paybacks to that.
Right. Heather?
Yeah, I mean, getting out there and knocking on people's doors, and it's a little, it makes you take a step back. But I think if you're really, for me, it was always, this is why I want to do this for you. And people, for the most part, were really receptive to that and really welcoming. So it is, it's hard, but it's good.
Jamie?
I think it takes a lot of guts. It takes a good planner, and it takes a good pair of tennis shoes. Really, I mean, and if you have those three things, really, that's your foundation. And then you listen, as long as you're listening and you are doing it for the right reason, you're going to come out top, no matter what the outcome of the election is. You're, as long as you're committed to the community and you're committed to your municipality or your city, you will come out on top, no matter if you win the election or not.
It seems to me that the issues that you've raised, that you're concerned about, are basically development issues, you know, mall construction and economic development, that sort of thing. Is that right, would you say?
Well, I think that's, that happens to be one of the biggest issues in Chesterfield right now, but we also, you know, the mobile home park, for me, was a big reason why I wanted to run, because, you know, there's always, it seems to be there's a development issue with that situation. And what I learned, it really is an equal rights issue.
What is the mobile home park?
The mobile home, there's a mobile home park in Chesterfield that was grandfathered in, and developers have come and tried to purchase the property, but they have always been turned down for their permits. And there's always a big celebration, yay, we stopped this developer. But the real problem... But the real problem is they haven't changed the zoning. And if you change the zoning to allow these residents that can no longer make improvements on their mobile home park, you can help improve their living situation. And there's no place for these residents to go if that development comes. We do not have equal housing opportunities in a lot of the St. Louis County municipalities, especially when you come, you know, south of 40 and west of 270. The opportunities change and until we acknowledge that and do something to change it, it's always gonna appear to be a development issue, but we really have to make sure that, you know, we're supporting all residents.
Heather, these the kinds of things you're facing?
Uh, yeah. Um, I mean, the two big things in, uh, in Creve Court are really, the, the one big thing was the hotel development. Um, so I would say, um, there's, there's other issues, but I think, um, you know, resident or commercial development is a big part of, of what's happening right now in the central corridor in, in St. Louis County.
And in Kirkwood, aside from beating Webster Groves on Turkey Day, what's going on out there?
Uh, well, you know, we, we, we're looking at, you know, how to grow our downtown and, and we're looking at a theater project for that down area, which is, you know, brought a lot of opinions. Um, but we also have somewhat of some, um, I guess some challenges with our residential zoning as well. You know, there's been a lot of issues with tear downs and rebuilds and infill housing and...
The whole Meacham Park thing is a big deal.
Exactly. And, um, you know, that, that gets residents really concerned and really fired up, as it should be, because your home is your livelihood and, and we wanna make sure that Kirkwood stays a great community for all families, so...
Let's take another call. Ira joins us from St. Louis. We're gonna hear the male perspective now, I believe. Ira, you're on the air.
Yes, yes, Don, it's a great show as usual. Well, I always like to commend women for getting involved with politics. Uh, they tend to be more budget, like she just said, more family-conscious about how to benefit the whole community, not just a part of the community. And I think too many times, you know, uh, that's lost in the discussions. And then sometimes men and mayors, we sometimes let our egos get involved on a project and not for the betterment of the community. And I think what you're doing, I commend them and, uh, on the Meacham Park, I have family members who was affected by that and I, you know, that's, and there was a, we gonna talk about that, but there's the things right now that they're doing and as far as she's saying before, it's different when they're on the, on their, on their, on their park with, you know, mobile home park. They can't find housing when they leave someplace from out there. They're just comfortable to whether you are there. There's no way possible. So right now, I commend her for fighting, for them fighting for that to take place and for those people who need, who need, who need, need your help.
All right. Ira, thank you so much for the call. Anybody wanna respond to Ira?
No, I, I think that, you know, what he talked about is we, we, we tend to look at, um, especially in St. Louis County, a lot of people that are on the outside, they look at, at it, it is development and it is a lot of talk about budget and parks and things like that, but there are some real issues that we're facing and, you know, they don't just all appear on the national level. They start at the local level. And that's why it's so important that we get involved in our municipalities because, you know, the mobile home park or the hotel or what's going on in Meacham Park, those things really do matter and they just swell into something bigger if we don't control them and we don't respond to them, um, in the right way.
Yes. Go ahead, Heather.
Absolutely. I mean, local, local leadership matters and it, it matters as much as, as what's happening in our leadership, I think, on the state and federal level. And not just because it affects those really, um, local backyard issues, but it, they also, like, your local leadership's making decisions on some of the bigger, um, more headline-making decisions, too.
Speaking of headline-making decisions, we have another caller, Randy. He'll bring up something that gets a lot of conversation going. Randy, you're on the air.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. This is an interesting discussion, um, and I applaud all of you for, uh, you know, going after elected offices straight. Um, since most of you represent suburbs of St. Louis, I was just curious to know if you have a position, uh, or outlook, uh, on city-county reunification or what that may look like.
All righty, let's start Kara.
Everyone pointing at me like, "I'm not gonna take it first." Okay.
I got it.
Um, well, you, Kirkwood is really unique, um, out of the municipalities in the fact that it is, um, we have a lot of self-sufficient things. You know, we have our own electric, our own trash. So it's always hard for Kirkwood to look at something like that, um, and see how it would benefit us, um, as a city. So that's always been something that's a talking point, you know, how do we look at, at maybe somehow bringing, bringing the city and the county together without actually merging the two? So, yeah.
I'm, I'm a native of St. Louis City, um, born and raised in North St. Louis, uh, and so I, you know, chose my home in St. Louis County. And so I, you know, I definitely believe that there are benefits to a city-county merger, but I also think that right now, are we ready for that? There needs to be definitely a, a long-term plan to make that happen. But, you know, I don't agree with, like, in Chesterfield, there was just, "Guess what? We are not gonna have the conversation and we're gonna vote on that right now." That's not the way to do it either. We have to be able to go to the table and at least listen and start the discussion. It doesn't mean you vote today and everything's merged and we have one police department, one mayor, whatever, but we have to be open to a conversation.
We, we have less than a minute left. Very quickly, Heather.
I was asked a lot about this and I, I would just say that we are one region, whether, from the outside, whether we like it or not.
Katie, give me, I'll start with you, Kara. Very quickly, a one-word piece of advice to any other women who wanna run.
Just do it.
It was two words, but that works.
It's a family affair. Run.
Very simple. Ladies, I wanna thank you so much for being with us. Congratulations on what you've accomplished so far.